All right, I call the meeting to order at 1:00 PM. Maya, can you establish the quorum?
Yes. Trustee Brown. Trustee Kobo Smith.
Here.
Trustee Dr. Lathan.
Here.
Vice President Rocha.
Here.
President Hernandez.
Here. Next, we have our closed session. We have one item, public employment interim superintendent. And then we'll return to open session at about 2:30 PM. So we'll go ahead and head into closed session now.
Great, everybody ready? All right, so I'll call back. Call us back to open session at 2:43 PM. Can we get the quorum reestablished?
Trustee Brown.
Present.
Trustee Kobo Smith.
Present.
Trustee Dr. Lathan.
Present.
Vice President Rocha.
Here.
President Hernandez.
Here. Great. Item B, reports from closed session. So we don't currently have anything to report from closed session, but we'll be continuing closed session after we conclude open session. Next, we have the flag salute. Trustee Kobo Smith, do you want to lead us in the flag salute?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Moving on to four items for information, discussion, and action by board. We have item A, superintendent search services and goal development consultation services. So just as an update, we began this discussion at our last board meeting and selected three firms that we wanted to invite to interview and have further discussions for. There's two parts to the services that we're requesting. There's a superintendent search service and a goal board development consultational service. And so we may, you know, depending on the will of the board, take either both services from the same firms or perhaps look for forming a piecemeal of taking one from one firm and one from the other. Dr. Martinez, anything else to add for context or information on this item?
No, I think you have the item. Again, the firms are here. Each one of them has several representatives, one having one right now. As you work with them, what they have asked for is that, out of respect, that the firms who are not presenting at the time would wait in the hallway. That's generally the practice so they can go forward and do their presentation and then answer any questions from you. And then, again, in turn, the next firm would come in. So that's what the firms have, in essence, requested.
Great. And again, yeah, if you're associated with one of the other search firms, we do politely ask that you step out of the room and we'll call you back in to look at the next firm. And just maybe for helpful timing, for the next firm we'll call as leadership associates, and then we will end with McPherson Jacobson.
Well, good afternoon. It is wonderful to be with all of you. I think it's fun for us in the respect that all of the search firms are friends, right? We've been in the same profession for decades, literally. Eric and Eric, Andrew and I have known each other since 1992, if you can imagine that. One of our wonderful people. I, first of all, want to thank the board for the invitation to have the chance to share about our firm for your superintendent search. Being a board member is a very challenging job coming out of our current political situation across the nation, as well as the challenges that we face to be focused on our students. And certainly amongst the most important decisions that you make as a board is making certain that you find the right candidate to be able to serve the students of the Antioch Union Unified School District. My name is Ron Carruth. I'd be one of the lead people assigned to this search to work with you. I have two other partners with me that would both be assigned as well, so it'd be the three of us working closely with you to be able to facilitate your search for a superintendent. We'd like to share just briefly a little bit about ourselves and then, secondly, what is unique about our firm to start off with. So my name is Ron Carruth. I'm recently a retired superintendent. I was a superintendent in Los Angeles County for 10 years and then a superintendent in Northern California, just east of Sacramento, for the past six years. So 16 years as a superintendent. Probably most importantly, when it comes to the superintendent's search role, is the fact that for the past three years, I served as the president for all superintendents in the state of California. I am the single best-known superintendent in California. I know more people, know more superintendents, literally, than any other person that you will get to know. I have had the pleasure of serving on as the president of California city superintendents all across the state. I'm currently the executive director for the California High School Coalition, really worried about our students, particularly in grades 912, who haven't been served, right? So I lead 71 districts and superintendents in our efforts to keep our voice clear in Sacramento. But from that, you build an extraordinary network. I'll tell you a little bit more about that network in a couple minutes, but that is about me, but literally have been retired in my seventh month. It's fantastic. So with that, one of our team members, Jose Gonzalez.
Everybody ready? All right, so call us back to open session at 2:43 PM. Can we get the quorum reestablished?
Trustee Brown.
Present.
Trustee Kobo Smith.
Present.
Trustee Dr. Lathan.
Present.
Vice President Rocha.
Here.
President Hernandez.
Here. Great. Item B, reports from closed session. So we don't currently have anything to report from closed session, but we'll be continuing closed session after we conclude open session. Next, we have the flag salute. Trustee Kobo Smith, do you want to lead us in the flag salute?
I flag the flag.
Leading to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Moving on to four items for information, discussion, and action by board. We have item A, superintendent search services and goal development consultation services. So just as an update, we began this discussion at our last board meeting and selected three firms that we wanted to invite to interview and have further discussions for. There's two parts to the services that we're requesting. There's a superintendent search service and a goal board development consultational service. And so we may, you know, depending on the will of the board, take either both services from the same firms or perhaps look for forming a piecemeal of taking one from one firm and one from the other. Dr. Martinez, anything else to add for context or information on this item?
No, I think you have the item. Again, the firms are here. Each one of them has several representatives, one having one right now. As you work with them, what they have asked for is that, out of respect, that the firms who are not presenting at the time would wait in the hallway. That's generally the practice so they can go forward and do their presentation and then answer any questions from you. And then, again, in turn, the next firm would come in. So that's what the firms, in essence, requested.
Great. So we can get started with maybe education leadership services. And again, yeah, if you're associated with one of the other search firms, we do politely ask that you step out of the room and we'll call you back in to look at the next firm. And just maybe for helpful timing, the next firm we'll call is Leadership Associates. And then we will end with McPherson Jacobson.
Well, good afternoon. It is wonderful to be with all of you. I think it's fun for us in the respect that all of the search firms are friends, right? We've been in the same profession for decades, literally. Eric Andrew and I have known each other since 1992, if you can imagine that, one of our wonderful people. I, first of all, want to thank the board for the invitation to have the chance to share about our firm for your superintendent search. Being a board member is a very challenging job coming out of our current political situation across the nation as well as the challenges that we face to be focused on our students. And certainly amongst the most important decisions that you make as a board is making certain that you find the right candidate to be able to serve the students of the Antioch Unified School District. My name is Ron Carruth. I'd be one of the lead people assigned to this search to work with you. I have two other partners with me that would both be assigned as well. So it'd be the three of us working closely with you to be able to facilitate your search for a superintendent. We'd like to share just briefly a little bit about ourselves and then, secondly, what is unique about our firm to start off with. So my name is Ron Carruth. I'm recently a retired superintendent. I was a superintendent in Los Angeles County for 10 years and then a superintendent in Northern California, just east of Sacramento, for the past six years. So 16 years as a superintendent. Probably most importantly, when it comes to the superintendent's search role, is the fact that for the past three years, I served as the president for all superintendents in the state of California. I am the single best-known superintendent in California. I know more people, know more superintendents, literally than any other person that you will get to know. I have had the pleasure of serving as the president of California city superintendents all across the state. I'm currently the executive director for the California High School Coalition. Really worried about our students, particularly in grades 912, who haven't been served, right? So I lead 71 districts and superintendents in our efforts to keep our voice clear in Sacramento. But from that, you build an extraordinary network. I'll tell you a little bit more about that network in a couple minutes, but that is about me. But literally have been retired in my seventh month. It's fantastic. So with that, one of our team members, Jose Gonzalez.
Mr. President, Board Acting Superintendent Jose Gonzalez. I aspire to be like Ron. I'm still a practicing superintendent. I'm in my 19th year as a superintendent. And so just want to share a little bit of, not so much what I have done in regards to service to the communities I've served, but the networks across the state. I've served on the California Association of Latino Superintendents and Administrators, both as a board member but also as an executive director, focused on equity and inclusion for all students. One of my proudest accomplishments was I was a gubernatorial appointee for the California Commission on Teacher Credentialing. So that body serves all of our certificated and preschool-certified folks. I was a lone administrator with 12 CTA members and institutions of higher education. So it was a plentiful dose of policymaking information. But again, the network that is able to expand from there. And then one of the other committees that I served proudly is the Fiscal Crisis Management and Assistance Team, FICMAT. And so that gives you the bird's eye view in role of oversight for districts that are having challenges with special education, achievement, fiscal strains. So to be behind that closed door, to see what districts are doing well, what districts are struggling with, and how we can support them is an asset to build into my portfolio, if you will. And so what I bring for you is a very diverse, across the state, access to policy side, practitioner side, and advocacy side. Thank you.
Hello, I'm Dr. George Soraki. I'm retired superintendent for about a year and a half. Upon retirement, I did a short stint, nine months or 10 months, as the Small School Districts Association Executive Director as they were in transition. Small school is anywhere under 5,000. So that, as you may or may not know, about 60% of our districts are considered small school districts. So I have a real large network of small school district superintendents, which we all know those guys do a lot and they become superintendents in districts, just like yourself. I worked as a superintendent up in Plaster County, above Roseville. I spent most of my career in the Central Valley, in Merced, and in Series Unified, which had a lot of diversity, a lot of poverty. And so I have a lot of connections with leaders in that area. I'd be remiss if I didn't celebrate your art. I really appreciate that. It really says a lot about you as a district and that your commitment to children and timely for what you're doing. So I believe that I can help and recruit and help you with the selection process, just like my colleagues. Thank you.
So ELS is the newest of the groups that you're going to have a chance to hear from. And although our organization and firm is new, it is made up of people who've worked with different firms or who are relevant to, I'm going to say, the educational challenges that we face today. The challenges that you face in Antioch are significant and they're very different than they were five years ago and very different than they were 10 years ago. I served as a superintendent through the financial crisis. And I think the COVID time and the post-COVID time and now this political time is very, very challenging. And so I think when you look for a search firm, you want to find somebody who is relevant to the field today, who begins to understand personally what it's like to manage, you know, I would just say, in our district, we went through 10 consecutive months of 100 to 400 public speakers a night. And I know the pain and the difficulty and the challenges that you face and how you try to manage listening to the community and yet making very difficult decisions. And the leaders that we have are very skilled, whether that is in-board governance or also in trying to help and establish manageable, doable goals for a new superintendent. In addition to that, we are very different in the respect that we're networked. When I think about every one of the firms in front of you today, every single one of them is going to, with great competence, be able to work with you to create a process that fits Antioch. But what sets us apart is our connections across the state. Just for example, next week, 500 superintendents come to Monterey for the biggest gathering of superintendents in the state. I personally will be running multiple events and I will shake hands with over 200 current superintendents in the field. Many of those are beginning to look for new positions. Nobody is going to be able to have the personal connections to encourage or have people consider your opening like I'm able to do. In addition, though, we have Jose. We have Jose's connections through CALSA. We have connections through all our different groups across the state of California. Love it or hate it, USC is the beast that produces more superintendents than any other group. One of our founding partners is the director or assistant dean for the doctoral program in Southern California. And there are many people with USC doctorates through that program that live and flourish in the Bay Area. But we have deep connections within the USC family as well as other families. So we really are unique and connected in that way. When I think about trying to find the right person for Antioch, the first thing is to really begin initially to understand the people that are considering a move or would consider a move. And then the other side would be working with you pretty quickly to be able to determine what exactly is the profile that you're looking for in that new superintendent? What human qualities do they have? What characteristics are you really desiring that that leader be able to emulate? What are the challenges that you see in the next coming years or looking out five years that you think the district needs to be able to face, to be able to address? And then finally, beginning to kind of think about the challenges within the community. What unique leader has to have the right background to come in and fit the needs of Antioch? And once we work through that profile together, we begin to find those candidates that meet that specific need. And whether that is equity-focused, diversity, we have those connections to bring all of those, I'm going to say, potential superintendents to consider this position. But I think that is a little bit unique about us. There are many people in search firms that are wonderful people. There are people still active who hired me 17 years ago. They don't know any superintendents. They don't go anywhere. They have a great database, but they don't know them personally. I can text probably 400 superintendents on my phone right here, right now. It's just that unique relationship that I have. I'm not going to have that in five years. I'm not going to have that in seven years. But the connections that we have across the state, I do believe, are truly unique. The other piece that we want to say is the search is tailored to your needs. Most importantly, this is your search. You have the responsibility of trying to hire that best person. And so we will work with you to tailor the right search for the needs of the Antioch Unified School District. It's really important that we listen to you and you help us understand what are the key elements and components that you want in that search. And we will tailor that to your needs. In addition to that, our team is really skilled that we have kind of people working in the background. Because while we're working on this search and you're working through that process, there are a lot of things happening. But your team is going to be really busy, right? Rob is really busy trying to manage the day-to-day needs in the district and his team as well. And so we will lift that burden from your team and try to make that as seamless and supportive of them in the process of being able to do that. But those are some of, I think, the unique aspects of what we bring when it comes to the search. When it comes to the board workshop, I think that the key things that we would focus on would be working with you and in particular, this new superintendent with time, to be able to first understand the roles and responsibilities of the superintendent and the roles and responsibilities of the board, to make sure that there's a common understanding and conversation to be able to understand, as we talk about the challenges we face, what are the roles that each of you have in that process. And then I think the single most important thing is beginning to focus on those goals, right? What do you need that superintendent to do, to be able to accomplish for the benefit of the students and the employees that work in the school district? So how do you kind of marshal that person's energy and focus? One of the difficult things in our society is everybody wants us to do 10,000 things. And so having come and been a very accomplished, very experienced superintendent, I know how to help lead that work to where it can be very focused, very clear, measurable, and you can see those outcomes. Because when there is clarity between the role of what the board is asking that superintendent to do and there's a collective understanding, then each of you know what your role is and you move together as a governance team to be able to accomplish that. And it's exciting to see. But you do have to have that relevant and recent experience as well as that giftedness to be able to focus, right? And so we would work diligently with you to ensure that you have a good plan. One of the elements that I'll close with is our firm is different in that we don't go adding additional costs, for example, mentoring a superintendent. We'll do that for free for that first year. And there are just kind of simple truths to mentoring a superintendent. There are some things that I'm really good at and some things that I'm not as experienced in. So in those areas where that superintendent needs support, I'll be able to provide that. But if it gets to, for example, facilities and some of the issues with business acumen, we're going to turn that over to George. When it comes to some of the current laws that are coming down from California and how you're implementing that with your board, that's going to be Jose. We bring kind of the whole team together to be able to support that superintendent, to be able to build a network and get them the right kind of training to be able to solve problems. The difficulty today in school districts is the challenges are so immense that sometimes we need specialties and we need the right people to help us solve problems. We have a lot of those friends that we've developed over years that have helped our districts and our administrators and our boards solve huge problems. But when you're new, sometimes you don't know everybody across the state. You don't know who to be able to, you know, refer people to, to solve problems. But we have that network to be able to bring that about. So with that, I'm going to turn it back over to, I believe, Jose.
You put it to sleep. If we could advance this or go back? See, we're always dependent on our IT folks. I'm just going to, I'm not going to reiterate all the partners and associations that you all can see for yourselves. One thing that I just wanted to add is, aside from us leading the work and the collaboration with you all and making one of the most important decisions here you probably have in your tenure to this point, is to, we have 17 other members. And those 17 other members range from, again, mentioned founding father, USC professor of doctoral program and administrative development, CBOs. We have retired superintendents that are leading AXA academies. The academies basically are built. That's the pipeline. As well as the access to various mentoring programs. CALSA has a robust mentoring program in cohort 22. Each cohort identifies 15 proteges, 15 mentors. So we come together at a time with 45 to 60 administrators each cohort. That is who we will be tapping. Once you identify the core values, the mission and vision and the type of leader that you want for your learning community, that's who we will tap to provide access and service to your community. Go ahead and forward the next slide. Thank you. That's you. Uniquely different, right? And that's where our goal is, to meet you where you're at. And again, I think my colleagues stated it well, that we're here to serve you. We're a partner in this process. Go ahead and go to the next slide. As I, you know, I was walking to the district in Antioch and former coach, I remember playing the Panthers in passing league and used to come here as a child and watch the Antioch Raceway Speedway. So I have fond memories of Antioch. I just couldn't resist saying that at this moment. So I'm going to walk you through our engagement process. Like Dr. Carruth said, is that you're going to see very similarities in processes. I think our process is sound, fundamentally sound, and very consistent with what you're going to see from the other groups. But our difference is that networking and who we know. And that's, at the end of the day, that's what you're hiring us for, is to find the right people and make sure we have a depth of candidates for you. So the first, if we're successful, we would sit down with you and have a planning session. We do not want to overprescribe. We will provide you some guardrails, some guidance. At the end of the day, you make those decisions on how you want the search to look. Obviously, we have some experience and we can give you some guidance. But it's your district, you know your community. We are willing to do as many in-person sessions as you think is fit. Those are just some of, and I don't need to read you the PowerPoint, you can see it, some of the groups that you may consider. And there may be other groups that we don't understand as a big part of your fabric, of your culture. We will also make sure that we have access to all of the community. And some people just can't come in person for various reasons. We would have an online survey that we would provide as well. With the end game really being to provide that superintendent leadership report. This is what you have heard from your community. You're being transparent. This is what we're looking for. And when the candidates see this, they have to reflect and then we can have dialogue with them about the conversations that we've had. Sometimes on paper, you know, it can tell a story, but our relationships can obviously get into a lot deeper. So that's our engagement process. The next one is recruit and selection. Again, I believe we've pretty much articulated the very fact that this is where our strength lies. We know people. We believe we'll, we'll get people to apply just because you put the job out there. But we can actually go tap people on the shoulder who may not have even considered it because we know their skill set and we can say, this is the best fit for you, a great school board, here's what they're looking for. You've had these successes, you've been in this position. You know, we definitely don't want to chase anybody out of a district, but we also do our job and do diligence to get the right person for you. We do thorough reference checking. And a lot of times, well, in the education community, if you know people, people can't hide. We pretty much can talk to somebody. We're not just looking at their references on their application. We go a lot deeper than that. And we usually can find somebody to give us some information. We bring all candidates to you. So some firms only bring you the top candidates. We want you to see everything we saw. And then we will put them into tiers for you in terms of highly qualified. We believe they fit nicely into everything that you're looking for. Qualified, but maybe don't have the experience that you may have required. And then those that applied. And you have an opportunity to pare that down into who you actually will interview. We will hold an interview workshop with you where you, at that point, will tell us how many people you would like to interview. We'd give you some guidance on that. We would also then look at questions, right? We want to make sure that we're asking the right questions to glean from our candidates if they're the right fit for what you're looking for. And Dr. Carruth mentioned our mentoring is part of our package. Not only you get three of us, but you get three of us to continue the support to make sure that your superintendent is successful. Thank you. Here's a proposed timeline. Of course, this is fluid and adaptable to your needs depending on, we make a decision this evening and we proceed and we'll begin. Dr. Carruth would be the contact with Board President Hernandez and begin to map out a timeline. This is a rough timeline for you all. And again, I can't reiterate what George mentioned, which was to, that we're here to meet your needs. I'm fortunate to be a multilingual learner. I started school as a bilingual kid, only speaking Spanish and Portuguese. So it's important that we connect with your stakeholders through an input session so we can facilitate those in the languages needed for your space. If it's not us, it'll be somebody from your team. The other advantage is many of us rose through the ranks. I started as a classified employee, as a paraprofessional coach, worked my way to a high school teacher, back to a middle school teacher. And so we can connect because we understand, because we had the understand, because we had the same trajectory as, as some of your stakeholders have, and so we see things kind of through their lens. So we'll be able to connect and bring some authentic dialogue and feedback. And the authentic piece is, what we find is they're not shy. They're not shy to, to share their feelings and we'll provide a safe space in that, for that information to be shared, and then we'll, as diplomatically as possible, relay that information to you.
So if we could move forward with this, I know I was thinking a little bit about this. The last four years, I've had the pleasure of training, being part of the training apparatus for AXA for all the new superintendents in the state, and some of those are beginning to look for next positions, right, and challenges. I teach the Northern California aspiring superintendent group, a lot of assistant superintendents, several from, the majority really, from the Bay Area, and they will be very curious about this position. So I'm just thinking the position will create a lot of, a lot of interest out there with a lot of good people. Specifically, our fee and our promise is we do one fee, $20,000 to conduct the search and coach and mentor that superintendent for that first year. We're committed to enhancing the leadership of Antioch Unified School District and really to work with you to support every student and every employee in this district, to come together as a team, to rally behind that new leader, whoever that person would be, and help them be successful from the board to the training, to the introductions to the community and then the new transition plan, if you will. With a board workshop fee, we have a $6,000 fee for that. I think you see those in the materials. I know that you're going to listen to a lot of long presentations, so we're going to be brief in that. I just want to again reiterate, thank you very much for the opportunity to present to you today. Whether you select us or whether you select another firm, we will, we will support you and the, and the families of, of Antioch. So thank you for the time. Have a great afternoon.
Great, thank you. Do anyone have any questions?
I do.
I tried to get away.
Yes, trustee Brown.
So as you guys were preparing to come, which I want to say thank you for coming, what kind of resources or data that you guys overseen or read about were to give you a sense of what we needed?
You know, I think, first of all, looking carefully at, I'm going to say, the demographic profile of Antioch. We have a very diverse community, so we're going to need to find a candidate that fits within that community and feels like they can hit the ground running. I think the second thing is you're probably in a place where you need a superintendent coming from a moderate to larger sized district, either as an experienced superintendent or somebody who's an assistant superintendent or deputy superintendent in a, I'm going to say, a really high functioning district that can bring those systems to help raise the continuing work of Antioch. I think, thirdly, the area of student achievement is paramount for that new leader. So as I look at it, I think about the student data, and at the end of it, all of this, we're all about kids, right? I mean, you're here because you want to see kids in this community do well and be successful. And so we have to look through the prism of who are those good instructional leadership superintendents? Sometimes you need people managing crisis, sometimes it's a facility issue, a budget issue. I would, I would say for you, it is going to be a people person who can connect with people and build trusting relationships with your employees, and it's also going to be somebody who can focus on helping students be able to be successful to transition into that next place. By looking at the data points, that's what is in my specific mind.
I, thank you for that question. The diversity that your district has is what defines you and is the greatest asset that you all have. I, I don't, I don't look at demographics as, as the defining narrative of what a student or a child or a learning community can do. It's endless possibilities that we offer. You, your unduplicated count is above, just above 80%, so that reach and the additional dollars that come to serve your, that, your student groups is, is an asset. Based on your unduplicated count, your ELOP dollars that are flowing just to create robust, rich programs that enrich kids to come to school. I taught biology. I just did a co, a co-lesson at a university for, for incoming administrators. One of the students there was my biologist student. I asked him to remind me about our mitosis lesson. He couldn't remember, but he remembered the relationship, he remembered the dissection that we did in my class, he remembered the jazz that I played, he remembered the Latino music that I played, he remembered the 90s rock music that, he didn't remember anything about mitosis. So it's, it's about relationship. And these programs, CTE, your CTE program, your, your dual language immersion program, you have multilingual learners just above 20 to 22% using those assets and leveraging those assets to build a program that focuses on the whole child.
Any trustee Cobble Smith, any questions? I think probably the only question I have is, I'm wondering if you could just say just a little bit more about the board goal development proposal and like what that would maybe look like? I think I'm inclined to try it as much as possible, depending on what the board wants to do, probably keep it with the same firm, but it would be good to hear about it.
Right, right. So I think the, I think the first piece, the first question would be is what kind of support would you need prior to the coming of this new superintendent, if you need board support for that? Because I think that would begin that early work of identifying specifically with, probably using some of the CSBA work. What is, what is the role of the board, right? And how do you be successful in terms of your being able to support the achievement of students? And then again, a little bit that discussion about what is the exact role of that superintendent that you're going to be hiring? I think it would be great to do that prior to the hiring of that superintendent because you could have that basis of that discussion established. And then when that new person comes in, give them a little time to kind of understand the district a little bit, and then we can come forward, talk first about the board governance pieces, about, okay, superintendent, here is the role of the superintendent in Antioch as defined by the board. Let's have the discussion about that. The clarity in those roles stop like boundary incursions, right? It's like being in a movie theater and having a bunch of space next to, you know, the, the entire theater being open and somebody comes and sits right next to you. It was kind of like a boundary incursion, and that is usually the greatest friction between superintendents and boards, is that they're kind of crossing over what they think they're supposed to be doing, and that creates friction. So the greatest clarity that you can bring before that person starts and when that person starts really sets you up. I would also say that I would give that superintendent perhaps a couple months of being in the district before we sit down and work specifically on the main goals. There may be some short-term ones, there may be some damage in the relation, in the relationships in the district that you need that person to begin to be aware of and focus on, and these are immediate goals that you want their time and attention to be working on. But at the same time, strategically, we're beginning to coalesce through surveys, through analysis of data, looking at the LCAP. What are those key areas that you need that superintendent to be able to work on? And the key is keeping them focused, which means fewer than more, right? If you can have a few key, really important goals that you want that superintendent to achieve, and you set out as a governance team to be able to support your team, your teachers, your classified staff to carry those out, you will see movement. But unless you get that clarity together with those goals, unless they're like, yes, this is what we're doing, you're going to get lost in a thousand points of light and nothing really changes. So getting your agreement, that superintendent's buy-in to what you're asking them to do is critical. And so I would see, I would see those kind of three phases there.
Great, thank you so much. We really appreciate it.
All right, thank you. Have a wonderful afternoon then.
Yeah, and if you could let the leadership and associates team know that they can come back in.
We sure will. Be very nice to Eric, he's wonderful.
How are you?
Good.
Good, good, good. I'm Eric Andrew, representing Leadership Associates. So glad that we have the opportunity to present in front of you. My colleague Donald Evans is not here, he had to take care of some personal business that he had to fly out, and so he will not make it here, but I'm okay with that. Is there a clicker? Oh, there it be. So I am the retired superintendent of the Campbell Union School District. I retired from Campbell in 2017, have been with Leadership Associates since then. What's interesting about my journey to Campbell, because I grew up in Compton. In fact, I'm a graduate of Compton High School, I went to elementary, middle, and high school in Compton. My mother still lives there, by the way, and so I have a lot of affinity for communities of color and communities of, that we are trying to do some great things for and so on. I tell you that because when I was hired to, told that I could come to Campbell, I didn't even know where it was, had no idea where it was, had a great time there and so on. Donald Evans has been a superintendent in several different districts. He's very well-known, particularly in the East Bay, but throughout the state because of his work in Newark and Berkeley and a few other places. So that's who you see in front, in front of you. However, what makes Leadership Associates unique is that we have 22 partners. I'm going to show you a slide before that. And every two weeks, every other Tuesday, we all meet and talk about every search that we're doing. So even though we may be the face, the reality of it is you have the whole firm behind you. Penny Pyle, the second person there, she is a dedicated administrative assistant for this group. So she will be working with your administrative assistants to help them go through the process if we're selected. Take a look at our purpose, we're about kids. If you notice, every one of these ends up with what we're doing for students, what we believe in. We believe in equity, we believe in the work, we believe in inclusion, we believe in all of that. I'm going to skip this slide in terms of, and you see at the bottom what we value. And we value it enough that we have statements in our firm, and we go over these statements that say, what's our diversity policy, what's our equity policy, how are we ensuring that we, as Leadership Associates, is ensuring that we're doing what we say we want our leaders to do in the state? We have quite a few aspects of our search. One of the things I know, as President Hernandez talked about, was the board governance and goal settings, those types of things. We do that right now for several districts currently that we service as advisors for. Here are our partners. One of the things that we made a very conscious effort of in the last probably four to five years, I will take some credit for that, is to ensure that Leadership Associates look like the clients and the people in our communities. So we really did do a nice job of making sure that our firm reflects what's in our communities, what's in the state of California. These are the people who would be a part of your search, that when we have those meetings every other Tuesday, they would be able to say, hey, know the area, know someone, when we're doing our vetting. There's very few people who we don't know in the vetting process, so we'll talk a little bit more about that. But we truly cover the entire state of California. We are Californian-centric, but that doesn't mean we don't have a national presence. Any search that we do, we always have tons of people from out of state who are looking at our website, and you'll see why that's the case in a moment. Some of the districts around that we've had some success with, over 700 searches. But here's one of the things I wanted to really take a look at. We will provide you with a broad pool of candidates. Those candidates will be reflective of what the board and the community of Antioch says they wanted to see in their superintendents. Sometimes people think leadership has a stable, we do not have a stable. We take a look and say, what is the professional description that this community says they wanted to see in a superintendent? We vet accordingly. If that person does not meet that criteria, then we will present them to the board, but we will say, but they don't meet all of the criteria that the board said they would like to see. Here's our top candidates, here's our medium candidates, and here are the candidates we believe don't fit Antioch at all. The fourth bullet talks about, we, 66% of our placements are people of color and women. We really go out of our way to ensure that everyone is represented, that we have an inclusive process, and that we want to make sure that everyone feels welcome and a part of our process. The other bullet says we have 1,500 subscribers. If we are fortunate enough to get this search, we will send a blast out to 1,500 subscribers who just subscribe to us because we are the top search firm. And I don't say that to brag, it's just a matter of fact. In fact, right now, we just had a statistic, we have about 66%, no, excuse me, 84% of the searches that have gone out for this year. So we're very well-known, but we work hard, and we don't take that for granted. One of the things we talked about, the 22 people I mentioned earlier, we're all partners in the firm, which makes us a little unique in that because we're, we're invested in the firm itself. As partners, we have a little different take on what we need. And then we remain active in the field, and watch what happens when I talk about this in a few seconds here. So our search starts and ends with you. It is your search. We will tailor it according to what you feel. We've given you some documents, but those are just templates. They are not made in, out of concrete or in stone. We will come to you and say, here's our plan, let's talk about what works best for the board, what works best for the staff, what works best for the community. We will ask that you provide us a list of educational partners who you want to be a part of the process. Typically, that means we're going to be in your district between two and four days, and we're going to sit and either have in-person sessions, input sessions, we're going to do some virtual input sessions, you're going to let us know who we should reach out to. We will give you a template that says, here are the typical people in a search for, searches that we do, yet we will say two things. One, your district's different, there are going to be entities that we need to make sure we reach out to. Two, this is your chance to really reach out to the voices who aren't necessarily always heard. And we're going to ask that you reach out to that, the voiceless, because every community has those who feel as though they've not been heard, per se. We're going to ask you, reach out to them. Once we've done that, we're going to do a survey, online survey, in which we're going to ask your community to complete. That usually goes for about 10 days. We're going to take all this information from what we get from the board, what we receive from the input sessions, what we receive from the survey, and we're going to provide to you two documents. One is the executive summary. The executive summary is going to say, here are the characteristics your community says they want to see in a superintendent. Two, it's going to say, here are the strengths of Antioch, and that's important because one of the questions we ask everybody is, is your chance to brag. Brag about your community, brag about your district. And then three, what are the opportunities for growth in this district? And that's an important document because it's important that the board hears what the community has to say. It also is important for whomever you would select as your superintendent to be able to say, okay, here's what the community's thinking right at this moment in time. Our outreach is extensive. I'm going to show you a doc, a page in a minute that's going to show you the number of people who we currently work with. I'm talking about in networks, leaderships, abilities, looking at governance, governance and so on, but we do a very, very personal outreach. Remember when I told you that we typically know somebody in almost every district? So when we're vetting a candidate, every candidate's going to give us three letters, every candidate's going to give us five references to call. The first thing we will do is look to say, do I know somebody who knows that candidate? Either through the eight people who they've given us, but more importantly, someone they didn't give us. Because we want to find out. In cases where, let's just say, sometimes we get letters of recommendation from someone, and I'll say, well, I know that person, I'm going to have an off-the-record conversation with him. And does- And as their comments off the record reflect the same as what they've written along the way. And sometimes you get a little nuance in terms of something about that person. But we do a great, we do a wonderful job of that. Again, Donald and I are in front of you. We rely on our partners to help with that vetting process. And in fact, in terms of collecting data, gathering information, providing everything for you, other partners will be a part of that process. But we really do that. We will put it in edCal, which is the AXA, which is the Association of California School Administrators document. We often will put it on your website, our website, and sometimes we'll look at other documents or organizations that we want to make sure that you may feel that, hey, can you put it in this flyer? Because this is a good place that we've used in the past. We're open to all of that. So again, it's your search. Once we've done that, done the thorough process, we're going to give you two things. One, once we've identified and gone through all of the applicants, we're going to give you a book that has the tiers. It's going to be three tiers. The first tier is going to say, here are the five, eight, seven, three candidates we feel meet the criteria that the board and the community says that they want it. The second tier are going to be those people who are pretty doggone close to the criteria. An example would be, let's just say that the board says, yeah, and the community says the person must have a doctorate. We're going to say, in terms of all of the other characteristics, this person nails, but they don't have a doctorate. The board has an option to say, you know what? We still want to interview them. We think they may be just right for our community. The five people or seven people that we give you, you may look at them and say, well, not real keen on this one. Let's drop them down, bring somebody else up. Your search, your opportunity, it's a dialogue. It is not something that we put in stone. Board interviews, we will be right there with you. Oh, I meant to tell you that. By the way, once we give you that book, we're going to give you a few days to look at all of the applications, meaning let's just say there are 30 applications. The board will see all 30 applications. We will put them in the tiers and tell you why we selected them in those tiers. But you'll get a chance to see every single application before we sit down for the candidate selection. And during the candidate selection, we will decide as a group, who do you want in an interview? And that number varies. It could be three. Sometimes it's as many as eight. But you will decide that, not us. And that's kind of the process as a whole. Most of us, meaning the other two firms, we pretty much have a very similar type of a process along the way. We talked a little bit about some of the things that we reach out. If you take a look at the upper right, custom workshops, we do board governance. We do leadership transition. We do facilitation. And one of the things that we do is, we have a lot of networks. You see the bottom networks there, where we're working with 200 superintendents, 45 districts, et cetera. What that does for us, it makes us somewhat unique, is we stay close to the field. We're talking to superintendents who are actually doing the work on a daily basis. So we have an idea of, what are some of the things that are happening in the field of education that we, I'm a retired guy, I may not know about it, but I'm working with current superintendents who say, Eric, here's what we're dealing with right now. Let's talk about this. And that keeps us informed. We have a tendency during the summer, we bring in superintendents from throughout the states, and they listen to key educators, colleagues who are on panels, who are saying, here's how we dealt with this type of a situation in the past. We have experts in the field who come and give presentations. And so it really helps the superintendents stay informed and recognize that they have other colleagues they can reach out to as well. I'm involved in almost every one of those things down below, so that's how I get a sense of who's out there, who's looking, but also helps me stay abreast of what's going on in our profession. We are part of every one of these groups. We just were called on by CSBA to become an affiliate for them, and they reached out to us. We didn't reach out to them, so that was great news. AXA, most of us are members of AXA, have served on the board in the past. One of our colleagues is with CALSA. Many of our colleagues are with CALSA, but was the executive director of CALSA. And so we stay close to the various groups. And this is how we're able to make sure that we bring you a diverse pool of candidates, because we've all been in one of these groups. CAPOL, the California Educational Excellence, Successa, CASA, all of us are deep members, and I'm on the board of CASA, for example. So again, we get the word out to these groups to say, Antioch is looking for a superintendent. Do you have any candidates who you believe? Here's the posting. Have them either reach out to myself or Donald Evans, or just go on your website or our website to find out more information about it. And we will vet them, again, according to that position description that I talked to you about. We will say, I've had many a situation where I've had superintendent colleagues say, hey, I'm really interested in that position. And I have to say, based on the position description, and me knowing what your skillset is, you may not be a match for that district. Doesn't say they can't apply, but we want to make sure that if this community and district says this is what they want to see in their next superintendent, that we do our best to make sure that happens. Closing thoughts? Again, I think I've talked about how we personalize it for you. It's your search. We are very flexible with that. The cost is the cost. I think what we've indicated in both our superintendent search contract and our board governance series workshops, that's what we're saying. You will have a full-time administrative assistance, which is always great for your administrative staff here, so they don't feel as if they have to do everything. They will have guidance. We've talked a little bit about the 66%. We're proud of that number. It dropped a little bit. It did drop. You know, we were like almost 70 at one point, and so something for us to take a look at. But because we meet every two weeks, and then we have an annual meeting every, twice a year, we stay abreast, and we just, we address every one of these issues. And then we talked about the strong statewide network and our national presence. So that's basically who we are. As I mentioned before, you're going to have some great, great search firms here tonight. And I really wish you well in your decision. We would like for it to be Leadership Associates, but we recognize that you have to pick the firm that you believe best fits the need of your community. So with that, I'm here to answer any questions or thoughts.
Yeah, any questions? Yeah. Trustee Lathan?
I actually liked the question that trustee Brown asked, and hoping she would ask the same question.
Uh-oh.
It's okay. So the question that I did present to the other agency was, what kind of data or resources do you use for you to be able to get a sense of what we really need?
Well, there's a couple of ways we aggregate the data. I don't know specifically which one it is, but we do have, for example, it's a SurveyMonkey type of a data. And what we look at is, first of all, what are the trends? And we have another system that looks at the trends from the survey itself and the trends from the online prospect. And that's how we put together the executive summary from that. I'm not familiar. I've just come on a back survey, so I'm a little out of the loop right now, so I will be honest with you. This is my first presentation this year. Yeah.
Thank you.
Yes. Other thoughts?
Any other questions?
And we do have someone who is dedicated just to doing that. I mean, they're the data people, person. He's a retired superintendent out of Santa Barbara, and so he does all of our data crunching for us.
Great. Yeah, trustee Kova Smith?
So I do, I do have a follow-up to that. So then what you're, what you're referencing then is SurveyMonkeys. So like essentially, you're compiling data that we've given you?
Yes.
And so you don't like look at any other sources?
No. We take it directly from what we get from your, from the board, the staff, and the community. We don't alter it. We don't filter it. And we were going to tell you. You know, if it comes back, we're going to be very honest with you about what the data has said and what the community has said. And I think it's valuable for the board to know that.
I'm not sure if the question, I heard you say that you do two to four days in the district?
Yes.
So I thought that was data collection. Is that part of it? Can you explain?
Yeah, and that is the data collection. So what basically will happen is, I'll give you an example. Sometimes the board will say, here are 30 groups or individuals who we want you to reach out for directly. We will decide, for example, looking at that group, breaking them down, to say, okay, do we need to be in the district for two days? What's the most convenient? Because that's one of the things that's going to be important. We as school people oftentimes decide what times are best for everyone. We want to make sure they're out there. And so, for example, we will have an evening meeting where we're going to invite your community to say, hey, you know what? We're going to be here this night, or maybe these two nights. We want you to come and give us your feedback. We will also look at elected officials and so on. They may be better for Zoom. But we'll, we'll make sure that we try to, we will accommodate everyone, particularly your associations or groups that you know you need to have feedback from. The other thing we will do, not only in terms of the in-person, we will ensure that everyone has access to the survey. Because have you ever been in an interview, and you've completed your in-person interview, and you leave and you think, I should have said that? They can go on the online survey and then put any other thoughts. Sometimes people in groups, small groups, may not feel comfortable saying something in their group, but they're more comfortable saying it on the online survey. So those are other ways in which we'll reach out to the community. That does not exclude us from doing things such as, this person can only meet at this time, a personal phone call, an email. But we will do whatever we can to ensure that whoever you said needs to be contacted is contacted. We will encourage each group to go back and tell their colleagues, family, friends who are a part of the community, make sure they go on the online survey as well. So the online survey is not just the people who you identify, but it's also anybody in the community who has an interest in the well-being of Antioch School District.
Yeah, trustee Brown?
Okay. So just say, for example, you didn't have any surveys. They were off the table. What does your agency feel you guys know about our district?
Well, several things. One, you have several points of pride. I look at things such as your early literacy program. I look at things such as you're really in tune in terms of making sure you have a strong governance team, that you're really working there. You're proud of your athletics. So there are several things that we looked at that says, no, we know this community. We feel this community. I'm one who, I don't take any position. I don't go for all the school districts. I really don't. I don't have to. I selected this community because I felt like this is a community I want to work with. You know, driving around through, around the high schools and so on, and getting a sense of, for starters, oh, this feels like home. So we really want to do that. We really get a sense of, what is this community about? We're going to ask you, and we want you to think deeply if we're selected, about who are we missing, though, in this group? Who do we need to reach out to? Think deeply about that. Don't just think about the typical folks that we always call in for interviews or call in for their feedback. Let's make sure we're reaching out to everyone. So if we didn't have the survey, that means we would hold more in-person meetings. We would have maybe more evening meetings to say, you know, parents, what's a good time? For parents who are working, who need to get home, kids are active, what's a better time for us to meet? Sometimes that's maybe like a Saturday afternoon. Sometimes it may be eight o'clock at night versus the typical, we're going to get everybody here at five o'clock, and obviously, people have things to do at five o'clock, and so on. So that's how we reach out to make sure that we are getting the voices of your community.
Any other questions? All right. Well, thank you so much for taking the time to present and show us a little bit more of the details here.
You're very welcome. Good luck to you, and I'll send in our next colleagues.
Great. Thank you so much.
Hello, hello?
All right. Okay. So you have, is this the, this is, okay, perfect, okay. All right. So good afternoon, trustees. Appreciate the opportunity to join you. I'm Nicole Anderson. I am representing McPherson and Jacobson as one of the lead consultants. And we'll talk a little bit about ourselves, but I do want to do just a quick time check. We kind of were kind of estimating as everyone was coming back and forth in rooms, so give us a quick time check, so we can honor your time in terms of how you want the process to go.
I mean, I think we're, just take the time that you need, yeah.
Okay. All right, perfect. So again, I'm Nicole Anderson. I am on search number, I don't know, 15, 16. I've kind of lost track, but I often introduce myself as the unicorn of this particular firm. As you may be familiar with search firms, not sure how many of you have done this before? Is this kind of our first, all of you the first? Ah, okay, okay. Well, if you get to know the firms, you'll notice that most are retired, and I identify as female. Most are male, right? Most have been superintendents or retired, or been a board member. And I'm kind of a unicorn, because I'm actually currently a practitioner going into being a full-time consultant. I worked at AXA for several years, leading our equity and diversity work across the state, which is phenomenal to see how it continues to evolve on behalf of our kids, but ultimately have added the search firm process, which I've been honored to be a part of these searches and providing access for many of our superintendents, who, several of them are brand-new, but also women and people of color and equity leaders. That's been the niche, which I'm super excited about. So we're going to share a little bit about what that means for this search process, but I want to allow my amazing colleagues I get to work with, Bill Spalding, as well as, Bill Hewitt is actually our retired search consultant, but my Bill Spalding's here, and also Dr. Dana Moreo.
Good afternoon. I'm Bill Spalding, and I'm the retired superintendent of Vallejo City Unified School District. Prior to that, I was at Gault, Joint Union High School District, and prior to that, I was at Dos Palos, Oreloma School District down in Merced County. So I've been a three-time superintendent, just retired. We were talking with Nicole. She has 15 people that she's put into place in the last seven years, six years, and all of them are in their, well, almost all of them are in their seats. I messed up her thing by retiring. Another one unfortunately passed away. But everyone else is in their position, which I think speaks a lot for the firm and for Nicole's work in terms of getting people in place. Thirty-seven years in public education, lots of work in the Sacramento area, a little bit in the Bay Area and Vallejo, two times, actually. And just really excited to be doing this work with this team, and excited for the opportunity to come work with you.
And I'm Daniel Moreo. I've been around for a while. I have been a superintendent in urban, suburban, and rural districts at different times. And my first district office job was right next door in Pittsburgh, and we used to collaborate a lot with your folks here. And so I've got a little bit of history. And then some of your principals, who I think have moved on, I actually was their instructor as they worked on their credentials and stuff. So I've got a history with you, so to speak. But again, I've been as a superintendent of a variety, variety of different districts. And I come up through the curriculum ranks, but I had two districts where finances became the big issue. And in both cases, we got the district solvent once again, and as a state administrator, it was delightful to be able to hand back to the board their authority and their place to work. I don't live far from here, and so, you know, it's a hop, skip, and a jump. And you said 30-something years. I don't know if I should profess this. Forty-plus years. I started really young. And so I'm delighted to be here and work with you. This would be my 12th time of working on a superintendent search.
It's a lot in front of you, and I know that all of the search firms kind of provide a similar service. So what we want to do is just give you a little bit more about what makes us unique, right? What makes us different? And so one is just, you know, we always kind of remind ourselves that our mission and vision is similar to what yours is. You know, we're grounded in what's best for kids. It's always about what is the best for our students. In an adult kind of environment that's very politically driven and also in an environment where there are flipping superintendents often, right? It's a revolving door. We are very concerned about that. And we know that stability matters. So one of the things we really get excited about is the fact that, I'm going to give you a couple of numbers, that our retention rates are super important to emphasize. I pride myself on all those searches. Literally, when I pull up the data, everyone is in their place. Some of them were new superintendents. Some of them were, again, I mentioned, equity leaders, women, people of color, but ultimately they all were great fits for their districts. And ultimately, when you look at our retention rates for our firm, in particular, we really pride ourselves on, we don't have a lot of our superintendents who are leaving. And what is that for? Why is that reason? Because we set goals and kind of criteria with you in the very beginning, and everything is driven by the criteria. So if you say, hey, these are the five things that we want to see in our superintendent, we're going to actually drive everything. The interviews, right? How we do our stakeholder input, how we do our recruitment and match that person with you. Literally, that is what you have as driving so that person is the right fit from start to finish. We'll talk a little bit about like our phase five, which is what you talked about with having goals and objectives set, but all of that is aligned with those five criteria. We know that with our unique and kind of customized and personalized way of working with boards, that that's what the kind of gift is of how you keep people in those positions. It's super important. So we'll talk a little bit about the phases in a minute, but I want to just give you a little context of why we're so unique. One of the things when I mentioned about personalize, for those of you that have known me in the profession and all of our network, we have a lot of networks, including all the associations, right? The affinity groups. But the thing that's so unique about the search process and every applicant, whether they got the job or not, they thank us for how we spend time because we care about their career. You're only going to pick one superintendent, right? Because you only got one employee. But there are a lot of people who are not going to get this job. And the ability to create what I call an environment in our public education system where we support our administrators, in particular our aspiring superintendents, their ability to have the personalized time. We're with you from start to finish, and we do the same with them. So when we, when they see McPherson is on that search, I haven't heard anyone say, I'm not going to apply for that job. And I will say, other search firms, there has been sometimes a reputation of that, but ultimately, even though all the search firms work together, right? We all know each other. We have great times together. And we're very candid with each other. But there are some, especially your diverse candidates, who know McPherson's going to have access for them. And that's the piece that's super important. You think about who you want to have in your pool, right? Qualify, right? But definitely someone who's going to be the best fit and will have access. So we pride ourselves on that. With regards to kind of our process, so one of the things we really are excited about is the engagement piece, right? And so I'm, I don't like doing all the slides, but you all have the slides, a lot of language on there. But I want to get to the engagement piece. Let me back up. Where we spend some time with your stakeholders. There we go. Yeah, because you can see that, right? So when we think about engagement, one of the things we love to do is we start with you as the board, and we talk about, what do you want to see in this new superintendent? So this is your search, so you're going to create that. However, we also want to encourage you to get input from all your stakeholders, right? Your kids, your parents, your classifieds, your teachers, your community. It might be the police chief. Should be the police chief, right? It should be, you know, those who you're partnering with, that village that's raising these children in Antioch. And so we spend about two weeks doing that. On the proposal, I think it says one day, but the reality is that we spend a lot of time, about two weeks, and a lot of it's virtual to give people access, but it's also in-person. We typically come one to two days. We could do it a variety of ways, but we actually ask them questions about what they want to see in the new superintendent, what are some of the issues, what's great about this community? And we do that in-person, but also we have the virtual space and we have a survey. So an in-person time would be like, maybe we come and we go to multiple schools during the day, meet with the students, right? Maybe we come to something in the evening where you're like, hey, we want to invite our families to come. Whatever way we need to engage, we will engage. I also live right down the freeway in Vallejo, so it's, you know, it's not something where we're far away. And we pride ourselves on being very local and also very familiar with the community as well. With regards to that input, what we do is we take that information and we give it to you in a report. And it's transparent, it's open, everybody gets to see it, and it's going to share some information that will help you understand what your community feels about this job, too. Because we want to introduce this person to a community that really, it connects to what they need. And then also what's nice is it's a nice recruiting tool. So for us, our candidates will get to see this report. So they're doing their research, they're watching y'all as board members, right? Is this a good board? But also, they're wanting to hear what the stakeholders are saying as well. So it's a great gift to give to your new superintendent. And then lastly, what it does is it helps us know, is this a good fit? So when we're doing our recruitment, there are some people who may not be a good fit based on what these things are being said, right? About the needs. You know, the fiscal piece, right, is important. Right now, we also have issues around fear about deportation, like it's real, right? And we're going to need a superintendent who's going to be able to come in literally and roll their sleeves up and understand what the needs are of this community. And that stakeholder report often reveals that. And so what's really nice is that in the process, you know, the stakeholder interviews, we really appreciate because we do some interactions that helps us also to get a sense of how people feel. The trusting relationships, right? Where they need to be maybe repaired, or there's some, you know, clarity that needs to be given. There's the things that we get to feel in those engagement sessions that really help drive the search. What we end up doing is once we give that to you, then you all have an opportunity to then move into a phase of us starting to look at your applications, right? So all these things are kind of going at the same time. And your timeline, I know there was a slide up there, but in your packet, it gives kind of a clear timeline of when we go through this process, your applicants are putting in their interest, they're watching, and then we get to the closing space, right? And what happens there is you all get a chance to see all the applicants. You get to hear kind of what we thought of them with our reference checks, because we do multiple rounds of reference checks, formal and informal. Y'all know what that means, right? Formal is what they list, right? Everybody has their resume and their, you know, letters of recommendation. And then it is a small network, right? It's a confidential network, but it's small. And so people know people. And so we definitely utilize our resources, and some people have been through our searches before. We definitely do a full, like, background check of our own before we bring them before you. Okay? Very important to do that. And so as you get to that phase of the work, you will decide based on that five criteria, like who is it you want to interview? So let's just say, your district's pretty attractive, I would say. So let's say there's, I don't know, I've had up to fifty, what is it, fifty in Washington? I don't know if you get fifty, but this is a different landscape, right? There are going to be people looking for jobs because of the landscape right now. But let's just say you got forty applicants, okay? You get to see all forty of them. You get to hear why we did or didn't recommend they be what we call the top, usually ten, which is like a shortlist. We recommend those to you to help you because we've spent hours and days and months going through this, so we won't want you to have to do the same thing. That's why you hire us. So we say, there's about ten that we say are kind of the top qualified that we'd want you to consider. What we do is we show you a video of them. So those ten, the shortlist gets a video, and you get to see it. It's kind of a pre-screening. They answer about three questions. They're about three minutes apiece, and you get to see them for the first time and kind of decide, you know, based on what they've provided, that we may want to see them in person. Typically, most boards narrow that down to about five, maybe six, it just depends. What ends up happening, then you have to decide on your interview, right? If you want to have two days or one day. But then we create a schedule based on those people that you want to interview in person. One of the things that I want you to consider as you think about the interview process, some have been okay with what we call an open session, okay? And then there's also open process, I'm sorry, and then there's the closed process. And what we refer to is that you, as a board, are going to interview the candidates, right? That's your job. But you also can invite your community to also have what we call a stakeholder panel. In the searches I've done, the good majority of those, we've had a stakeholder panel, and it is actually, I encourage boards to do it because it's a great opportunity for the community to be a part of it, so you have representation. They give you their input, strengths, concerns, but also what they do is they give a good insight on like what field they got. You're going to see the same candidates, and you're going to see like a comparison of maybe who rose to the top. They don't rank them, but you get to use that as part of your input. Some will say, okay, what about the confidentiality, right? So especially if you have folks who are like a sitting superintendent, right? They don't want their information to get out unless they're the finalists. So what we have is a very clear and confidential process. I've had zero breaches of confidentiality. We have a very good way of what I call facilitating those interviews, so they're never left alone, right? There's always going to be one of us who's in the room with you and also one of us in the room with the stakeholders to walk them through the process, to make sure they follow just basic HR processes, right? Everybody gets the same question, right? Make sure they're not asking new questions, really giving them the process. It's a phenomenal experience, and they're very thankful of you as the board. And also, it's great for whoever the person is you pick, they will already have gotten kind of an introduction. It's a great welcoming of that person. I will say, some boards are leery of that, and they've closed it where it's just the board does the interview. So that's your choice, and you don't have to decide that until we get to the space of creating your search calendar, and then you get to a point about halfway through where you can decide that. So I don't want to stress you out about it now, you've got some time to think. But the key, the point of our uniqueness is we want the stakeholders to be involved. It's an amazing process for superintendents. And I mentioned earlier, all of ours have been sustained, right? I think you went through that in yours, right?
Yeah.
Was it fun?
It was. And one of the--
Yeah, get a little testimonial.
Just a little testimonial. One of the things that happened is, so there was a selection, I think, like of twelve people, something alike, like that, maybe sixteen. And it was on, it was during COVID, so it was on Zoom. But what was great about it is I was, you know, asked a series of questions, I responded and interacted. But when I came onboard, there were a lot of people like, hey, remember me? You know, I was on that committee. And so I had instant friends, you know, which helps. When you're coming in as a superintendent, there's a lot coming at you at one time. And there's typically a lot of things you've got to get working on right away. So when you have people who have seen you already and people who are maybe even in your camp, you know, and these guys were, it's just nice to have that instant introduction and people that you can reach out to. And a lot of them are kind of key stakeholders anyways. So that was really helpful, too. So anyways, that's my testimonial for the process.
Yeah. Want to add anything else?
The only thing I would add is that, and the word is in your proposal, is transparency. That's what we really work at, and the stakeholder panel helps with that. We will ask you to put a place on your webpage so we, with you, can keep the community up to date as to where you are. If all of a sudden one night you announce the new superintendent and nobody knows what you've done, that could be problematic. So what we want to do is be as transparent as possible, but at the same time, we're working on confidentiality. And so usually, the stakeholder interview and your interview happen at the same time, and we swap them back and forth so that there aren't people out there who, a week before you interviewed those folks, and you say, you should have seen that one, you should have seen this one. They see them just when you see them as well.
Yeah, so we're going to wrap up a little bit, but I do want to emphasize a couple of things. One, you might be wondering about recruitment, right? What makes us different? We all do the same thing. And so I'd mentioned earlier about we were known for having what we call a diverse pool of candidates that range from not just ethnicity and gender and bilingualism, you name it, but really around just their really rich experience. One of the ways that we recruit is through our network of, you know, candidates we've had. We don't necessarily have a stable of people or, you know, a group that we always go to. We always have, it has to be the right fit. But we do have a lot of people we know. And so we recruit, right? That's what we recruit, we outreach. We also have pretty well-known because we are also a national search firm. So what happens is, we get hits all the time on our website, people are very well-aware. Don't get a lot of out-of-state applicants, it's very rare, but there's a few. And to the point of, of, you know, out-of-state candidates, you know, anyone can apply, right, for this job. Even your internal, you know, staff, if anyone wants to apply, it is open. And we always say, internal folks, please reach out to us. We have kind of a way that we always want to communicate the process because it is a little unique. But anyone can apply, but it is going back to, we recruit and we screen those applications, we do reference checks based on those five criteria. That's the lens that we use because it can't just be anybody. There are great superintendents and brand-new people who have never been a superintendent who can come and do a phenomenal job here, but it has to be the right fit. And I know you're not interested in having superintendents come and go, come and go. I don't think any board wants to do that, right? You sure? Okay. I want to make sure, yeah. We have the same mindset. Our goal is that they come and they stay. And it is important to recognize, it's a governance team, right? So it's also the board working with superintendent. It's a two-way street. I often joke with boards when we're at the CSBA conference, and, you know, yes, there's that revolving door, but it is, it's not just a superintendent, right? It's a team. So the boards have to make sure they're also ready, all five of you, ready to really get behind this person and have key priorities through all of the tough times you're going to go through, but also all the great times you're going to go through. That's the sustainability piece. And so that's our mindset. And so with regards to, I know you're going to have a few questions, I'm assuming. So what I want to do is kind of move to this last piece because you mentioned about goals and objectives, right? So part of our phase five already includes that. So in the cost, that is part of the work, right? Phase five, which is super important, is once you get to the finalists and you sign, you go through negotiations, we do the background checks, financial, education, criminal, we do all the background checks for you. You're finalists, you all negotiate, and you sign the contract. Then from there, usually, July first, yes. So usually, you give them like a couple of months to find the bathroom and figure out where everything is, right? And then we say, hey, you need to set some goals and objectives. Don't wait too long, right? Because what we don't want to do is be subjective, right? Because we've had so much going on, and now we haven't set goals, and now we have expectations for this person. So we will be with you with phase five, that's part of the contract, and you actually will set the goals and objectives through connecting with what your board priorities are, but also the five criteria. So it comes right back. So it's actually a pretty simple process. We walk you through that, and then if you get to a space where later you're like, hey, we want to have coaching or governance training, we, our team has the ability to provide that as well, which would be outside of the contracted space. So those five phases includes the goals and objectives. So as you're considering that, I know that was a question that you brought up of how you would decide that, but it's part of the contract and it's always what we've done. And so with that, what I want to kind of end with is the cost, right? So one of the things, and I think you have it in front of you as well, but on page five, you can actually see kind of a breakdown of the cost. And so this is the total cost. We call it not to exceed. And we always pride ourselves in being very economic in comparison to other firms. You get a lot of quality service for a very economical price that meets your needs. But you can see the breakdown of all of the different pricing, right? So when you think about what comes with this, right? Obviously, our time for doing the recruitment and working directly, again, we'll have whoever is your point of contact, we directly work with them. So they'll have access to us 24/7. That's just literally what we do from start to finish. What happens during that time, too, is the advertisement is going on, right? So you got the edcal and you got the edjoin, the normal, you know, your own HR department. Literally, you can select in our first meeting what you want to do in terms of your marketing. It also includes doing the stakeholder input sessions, right? So that's part of the cost as well. You can see it's kind of broken down with what the fee is. What happens during that time too is the advertisement is going on, right? So you got the edcal and you got the, the edjoin, the normal, you know, your own HR department. Literally you can select in our first meeting what you want to do in terms of your marketing. It also includes doing the stakeholder input sessions, right? So that's part of the cost as well. You can see it's kind of broken down with what the fee is. And then the expenses are kind of like an estimate of what that looks like for the consultants to do the work. So ultimately for you, that price is all-inclusive. Everything is there. And again, we don't nickel and dime, you know? I know sometimes like it says like, oh, we'll be there one day for stakeholder sessions. We'll be here as much as you need us to. Don't tell the home office that. But literally that's the work we do. We got to make sure we get it done for you. And so with regards to kind of next steps, we want to kind of open up for questions. We didn't want to give too much in giving you like a whole, you know, synopsis about this again, but hopefully we answered the things that you need to know and hear. And I'm just going to end with saying, you know, we really want to work with you. We want to partner with you. We all have a connection to this district in one way or another and just care about this community, care about this particular area where I got to kind of grow up in, right down the street in Concord. I guess what I'm really saying is I played basketball against you all a lot. And we had a great time. But yeah, just really care about the community. It's changed. I want you to like recognize that. For those of you that have been here, you know, I don't know how long you've been, you know, in this space, but it is different from when I was a child. And you have some different challenges that exist, but also very similar to what I feel about my own city in Vallejo. There's so much potential for a community that's diverse and will continue to diversify itself. But also the challenges come. And I always believe that a community like this, what's going to make the difference in it is your school system, right? And your babies deserve the best. You have amazing people who work in this district. You know that, right? But it's a hard time in education. So they're going to need a leader who's going to be able to understand how to bring people together. This is the time, lock arms with you. And we understand that. Our team understands that. And so we want to provide that service for you and we'll carve out that time and really dedicate to getting you the best person. There are folks ready. There are folks ready. So with that, I will yield our time for questions and just again, appreciate the time and the invitation. Yeah.
Thank you so much. Any question? Yeah, Trustee Brown.
So I presented this question to the last two agencies. And so I'm going to present it to you guys as well. What type of resources and/or data that you guys as an agency looked at, reviewed to give us a sense of what you think we need versus not like surveys or anything like that? But you as an agency, what do you think that we need? And where did you
Okay, say that again, rephrase that again. So the sort of resources and data that we would need to do.
So what that you guys used that, that gives you guys a sense of what
Oh, I see what you mean. Got it. Well, I think one is experience. Like you've heard the experience of us and I think, you know, we can go to our whole bio, but we bring one, just a lens of being in practitioners in this space and being familiar with what districts need and watching you being even a parent, being a fellow administrator, doing coaching of people you all have had in this space. We're very familiar with that piece. Looking at things like the dashboard is always wonderful, right? But it doesn't tell the story, right? We could talk about your, you know, English learners and what you need. Like all those things are pretty much the, the solid data points that tell us about you need a candidate who's going to be able to understand the diversity of your community and the specific needs. In terms of resources, you know, I think about here, the survey piece that you talked about, like that, that's something we have to get, right? Like we're not going to profess, we know your community. We're visitors, right? So we would be disrespectful to say, we know everything you need. That's why that part is so important for us. But I will say that in the research of your particular district, one of the things, it's a great match for the type of leaders that we have in our network. And I won't go into detail about that, but this is, this is literally one that we've just been familiar with. We've known people have come through here. We've just been familiar with the space. But there's still research we have to do. And that's part of why, you know, the partnering is so important to be able to go through the space of what you need. There's going to be some things that come up that you'll even say, I didn't know that, right? And there's some data we need to consider. There are some voices who are missing in this space. You know, we always wish students could come and also be like, hey, we want that firm, we want that firm. We wish that was the case. Like it's just, we love y'all adults, right? But we want our students to also give input. So there's some things that are unknown, but then there's also things that based on our familiarity of our work, being practitioners, being from this area and familiar, I think is super important. And I'm just going to reiterate our network, right? We know people and that's super powerful that everyone can't always say when it comes to this space. So we're really honored to bring that to you. Hope that helps a little bit.
And my second question, based on what you just said, is the second question would be, you mentioned references as far as formal and not formal. So how do you divide the two? Like you said, I know people. So maybe some of it could be rumors. So how do you divide the two? And how do you present that to us?
No, good question. So absolutely, we say both because it does give a bigger picture and it also helps us know what questions to ask. So part of our process is when you apply, we're going to call you first. And we're going to ask you, why do you want to be superintendent? And yeah, like you need to tell us why. We also do, you know, ask them particular questions about themselves, about their resume. And then we do ask them about, okay, we've given, you've given us references that you want us to talk to, but there may be some other folks, right? Anybody else you think we should consider? Because remember you're going to go through rounds of references. As the further you get down the line, we may have talked to people 10 times over, right? Because the closer you get, you're going to have more. When I, that's the formal piece, right? Is going through the process of screening, which is very natural. The informal is that it's a small world and people know people. And so because we're consultants, we operate under the guideline of confidentiality, right? So even though we know consultants, we all understand it's a confidential space and that there's integrity, these are people's lives, right? So we're not there to harm people or to get in the way. That's the total opposite. It's about access. But we do want to make sure we protect boards from understanding. There are some things that if it's not disclosed to us, we got to protect you from bringing someone that may not be the best fit. And we don't want to come here and say, hey, we didn't know that. That's not, so, so we do, we do our due diligence, but we're very conscious of respecting people's, like their careers. And it's hard to unknow people, right? Like you know people and that's actually, you know, we used to call that something back in the day. A network is, you know, it's not what you know, who you know. That's a benefit. But it's definitely a network of people who we trust and understand the confidentially, confidentiality and respect people's roles. But we are conscious of that, of, you know, being careful not to jeopardize someone's career or go by hearsay, like super important. That's why you get multiple sources, yeah. Yeah, yeah. Thank you for them questions. It's very, really powerful.
Any other questions? No, well, you all are not making this easy. But thank you so much for taking time to present.
Okay. Well, we appreciate you allowing us to and we wish you the best. Whatever happens, we know you're going to get someone great. And we would definitely encourage people to consider Antioch Unified. But for now, we're hoping you'll consider us to be the ones to do that. So are we going to come back for deliberations or how, how are we doing that?
I think, I mean, I, I think, I think probably would be best is maybe step out and like, I mean, I think we'll deliberate here amongst ourselves.
And you'll come get, grab us?
Yeah.
Okay, sounds good. All right, thank you so much.
I have a question for the board, Board President.
Oh, yeah.
Is it possible that when we go back into closed session to talk about the other items that we can talk about this?
I think we should talk about this in open session, actually. I think it's more appropriate to talk about, yeah, in open session. Yeah, so does anyone have thoughts to kind of start off this discussion? Otherwise, I think I have some thoughts. Yeah, I guess I'm happy to start us off. So I think, so, and it's, it's, it's interesting, I think, points to the power of just getting more information and getting a better presentation. I'm leaning towards McPherson and Jacobson, which was the firm that I didn't even think that would, we should invite. But I think, I think some of the pieces on transparency, on the stakeholder engagement were particularly resonant to me. And then the retention rate, I think, is a huge piece there. And I think the cost is really, I mean, all the costs of three firms are honestly very reasonable. And there's not significant difference there that I think that should affect our decisions. So that's kind of what I think, but.
My question, were they covering, were they covering the board involvement too? I mean, the education, because over here they had separated the first group.
Yeah, so, so I guess, so different groups kind of like did it in slightly different. So I, I guess based off the presentation, based off the proposal in front of us, McPherson and Jacobson are doing some of that. And a lot of that, it seems like, within their estimated just under $20,000 cost. But in their proposal, they do list an even more intentional $2,000 cost for a one-day, very intentional session on board development.
Okay, so it's 2,000.
Yeah. But it looks like, you know, some of the other board goal pieces do get mixed into that phase five. So I think, I think they just don't have a clean separation that some of the other firms had.
Yeah. If you want me, I'll just go ahead. I like what you were saying. I mean, I like this last one because it's more local. I thought the first one, I was really interested because there was, they had so many people they were connected with. The network was very strong. You know, it's kind of hard when you have all three of them, they're all doing the same thing. But it's just the presentation is what I was going by and that's what I saw. And that's, of course, has a difference in cost is 20,000 plus 6,000 separately. So that was the difference between the, the other ones. But I'm, you know, I, I'm hearing, I'm listening.
I think from my perspective, like nothing speaks to stability like retention, right? Like I don't want to, when I was at CSBA and hearing that the average rate right now of turnovers is like one to two years, that was very frustrating to me, just even here. So given all that our district has been through, I would definitely like to connect and would hope for that kind of retention and stability in the district. And that's not to say that we couldn't get it from leadership and that's not to say we couldn't get it from ELS. But the fact that she really marketed that was like really lets me know that I think she truly understands the temperature and what we need.
Trustee Brown.
McPherson as well. The only question I do have, because I didn't see it unless my eyes were playing tricks on me and you guys can point it out. There was no cost for coaching. I didn't see that in her graph. I know the other company broke that down with coaching for the first year, but I don't, I didn't see anything for McPherson. And there was no dollar amount attached to it.
I think she, I thought she said that that was actually included because she, on phase five is establishment, established performance objectives and measures. So I thought she was very clear that there would not be a separate, that that was actually included. And then it says provide the two-year McPherson and Jacobson guarantee.
Okay, so instead of coaching, she just, it's just used word differently. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I think these firms just have different ways of like separating and like delineating pieces. Yeah, Trustee Lathan?
Yeah, I think all of them, I was quite impressed and they all have very valuable skills and abilities. My, I lean towards leadership and associates because of the kind of experience and expansiveness of the folks on their team. And so again, and remember I have two hats. So I'm a board member, but I'm also an educator who, who's been in these spaces. And so I think for multiple reasons, I would choose them. And I really did appreciate McPherson and Jacobson. One thing I know about them is that they choose, they present unconventional folks to us. So they might not have risen the traditional rank of being a super, to be a superintendent, but they might choose someone who's been something else, you know, like I've seen them choose different superintendents who've been good fits, who might not have been that traditional look that a lot of people, a lot of boards think that they need to have. So I do appreciate that about them. I appreciate the ELS, their expansiveness, even with the Latino community. I thought that was amazing considering our, our demographics. And then leadership and associates, they, when they say they are the 66%, it is for a reason. They really do do a phenomenal job, very thorough job at vetting people and they know lots of people. And one thing I'm concerned about, and it just reminded me as Trustee Kobo Smith talked about the revolving door of superintendents. I see that a lot and a lot of times people, they present themselves so well, you know, because they're great interviewers and they're charismatic and they dress nice. But when you actually look at the work that they've done, it hasn't been much. And I think, I know leadership and associates can sift through that. But, and I also believe from looking at McPherson, they would be able to sift through that. We don't, this is for me, I'm not speaking for the whole board, but just someone who's really solid and not just a face, right? But someone who actually gets in and do the work. One of the firms, I think it was ELS, talked about when, talked about, and talked about instructional leadership. That's not the term that they use, but they said like, your, your, our finances, yes, everyone has to make cuts, but we're in a good position for that. But when you look at our test scores, when you look at quality of instruction and leadership that can, that, we have some great folks, but we need, we're good folks. We need to go from there to great. Like we need someone who understands instruction. And I love that they did point that out because a lot of people will choose, well, they are a great CBO. Well, we have a CBO that, that keeps us on track. That's not what we need, right? We need someone who understands how to move the needle instructionally, but also culturally. Like we need to heal in this district, so who can do that? So I know I just gave you a lot. I can't, like I'm open to all of them, but my first choice would be leadership because I know the, the work that they do.
Yeah, these were three really great firms, I think, with a lot of strengths in different areas. You know, I think, yeah, I think ELS really resonated with me in terms of like their personableness and intentionality and really, I think that was like, and their, their like connection with people, I think, was really strong there. And I like leadership and associates, especially their, their focus on how do we get, you know, leaders of color and women into these positions? I think that was really strong. Maybe the last thing, as, as I was thinking about this, that, that again resonated with me with McPherson and Jacobson. And not that the other firms don't also like agree with these things or value these things, but McPherson and Jacobson called it out directly that we have an incoming challenging environment for undocumented students. And I think when we think about schools being a safe place for all students, I think we have to make sure that that's a top priority. Regardless of even where your values are, where you stand politically, that's going to affect our, you know, average daily attendance. It's going to affect our enrollment rates if people are not bringing students to school, which ultimately is going to impact all students. So, you know, whatever, you know, values or things that you might have, those, those battles shouldn't be happening in our schools. And McPherson and Jacobson said it very clearly that you, we need a leader that realizes those kinds of things. So I think that's another piece that resonated with me.
Well, for me, even though there, that we weren't looking for a national, I think this is the only one. They said they had a national look at candidates. That was a little different for me. I, you know, I don't know, I, I have, I can go with, with McPherson. I guess I was more interested in his first one because of the amount of people they were connected with. But all three of them are, are in good positions.
Yeah, I mean, I think, I mean, I think, I think it sounds like we have a majority that's leaning towards McPherson and Jacobson. Dr. Marti, do we need to take a formal vote probably on this one? I think we do.
You should, because again, your process would be to take action to determine that you want to enter into a contract with McPherson and Jacobson. That becomes the next step. If in fact, that's the decision, then you will want to, you know, either Board President will communicate directly with, again, McPherson and Jacobson. They usually have a contract that is a prepared contract outlining the circumstance of what the services are. And then that contract would be presented to the board for a formal approval of the contract. But really you're kind of taking action today to make your selection to enter into that contract. You still could find that, again, the contract comes to you and you go, oh, my goodness, this is not what we talked about. So you don't have a formal action yet until the contract is formulated, but you want to be able to take that action today so that you can move forward.
So, yeah, I think unless people have other comments or things they wanted to express or share, I'll entertain a motion to, you know, select one of these firms. Or I'm, I'm happy to do it. I think, I think, I sense a little bit of hesitation. So I'll go ahead, I'll, I'll motion to select McPherson and Jacobson as the search firm to bring forward a contract for us to approve.
I second the motion.
Great, so it's properly moved and seconded. Any other final comments or discussion? All right, Maya, can you help us through a roll call vote?
Trustee Brown. Trustee Kobo Smith.
Yes.
Trustee Dr. Lathan.
Yes.
Vice President Rocha.
Yes.
President Hernandez.
Yes.
Great, so the motion passes and we'll move forward with exploring a contract with McPherson, Jacobson moving forward. Oh, and I probably should have actually called the firms back in, sorry about that. But maybe, yeah, maybe we can call the, yeah, can you maybe get the firms back in here and we can formally let them know? Yeah, very good. Hello, everyone. Welcome back in. I apologize, we, we did not call you in back before we formally took a vote and gave direction. We just wanted to emphasize that this is actually such a challenging decision. You, I think as you all said, you, you all offer such great services and have such different, unique and strengths. But I think as we discussed, kind of some of the needs that we have in the school district and some of the things that I think were presented in the, these presentations that I think expressed some of the values that really aligned with us as a board, we've decided to move forward with McPherson and Jacobson as the firm that we'd like to do the search. But, you know, we really appreciate the time that you all spent here today with us. We know that, you know, it takes time to do these things and there's a lot of work behind this. And we wish we could select three firms to do a search, but that doesn't make any sense. But that, but thank you so much. Great. For next on the agenda, we have future meetings, which are, future meetings are January 29th and February 19th. And then we'll be moving back into now closed session for people that are trying to stay informed of what's going on. I, if I could take a guess, it might take us another 30, 45 minutes. But again, could be less, could be more. And then we may or may not have action to report. So just as you all are deciding whether you're going to hang around or anything like that, just want to make sure I'm as transparent as possible. But we'll go ahead and go back in the closed session and then we'll come back. And if we have things to report, we will. have things to report, we will.